Planning Commission meeting of January 28th. The time is 6:31. We are still in COVID times, so I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During this public health emergency, City Hall is close to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed on channel online and on ETV channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at www.Emeryville.org and then navigating to the Planning Commission page. Once there, you will see the link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting by using the raise your hand feature on your screen or if you're calling in plus press star nine. The Zoom call in information was provided on the posted agenda and there's a link to the Planning Commission agenda page as well. So Charlie, if you want to do roll call?
Certainly. Let's see Commissioner Chafe.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Mendez.
Here.
Vice Chair Young.
Here.
And Chair Thompson.
Here.
All five commissioners are present. We have a forum.
All right, so now is the time for a public comment. So we're going to three on the on the agenda. Now's the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make a public comment related to items not on the agenda should have begun submittal of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, press star nine and the clerk will call you on you at the appropriate time. So I'm going to ask the city clerk right now if any comments have been received via the online comment card.
I can respond to that. There are no speak online speaker cards.
Okay, has anyone raised their hand to make audio comments?
No, there are no raised hands either.
Wait, isn't this where Commissioner Guerrero wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
I do, I just can't find where to raise my hand.
Oh.
It says pause for delay, so you're fine.
Can I can I speak?
Yes, you may go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to just thank everybody for being so great to work with. As you all know, I've submitted my resignation because I no longer live in Emeryville. I'm going to turn off my camera right now because this is hard. You know, it's been four years that I've been on the commission. I am heavily invested in Emeryville and I really can't imagine living anywhere else in the Bay. And so my decision to move to Portland was really because of all the capability and the work that they're doing here to make it a great city. And they're the same things that drew me to Emeryville. And so at this point, I just want to thank you all for being so great to work with and let you know that, you know, I'm going to be back. I'm still employed in the Bay and at some point you may see me again for a public comment on some items in the future that we've been working really hard on developing. And so this won't be the last meeting that you that you see me, but in the future it'll be as a member of the public and it was a tough choice, but at this point I think it's the best one for me and and I think that you all are in good hands. And so looking forward to see what you all do.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerrero.
Thank you.
I'd just like to note that we are planning to present Commissioner Guerrero with a resolution that your next meeting in February, so hopefully he can come back for that.
I'll be back. Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. And thank you for your leadership, being the chair last the last chair.
Thank you, Chair Thompson.
Okay, I'm assuming there are no additional comments?
I don't.
Charlie, did you see anything?
No raised hands and no online speaker cards.
Thank you. Hearing no additional requests to make comments, the public comment portion of this meeting is now officially closed. You'll have an opportunity to address and speak on matters that are listed on the agenda when those respective items come up. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the action minutes of December 10th, 2020. Are there any comments?
I have no approval.
Second that.
The second was Commissioner Chafe, is that correct? Okay. All right. Let's see Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Young. Vice Chair Young. Aye, thank you. And Chair Thompson. Five ayes, the action minutes are approved.
Hey, fantastic. We're going to move on to the Community Development Director's report. Charlie, you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair Thompson. So this is my report on recent City Council actions and other news. The council has had two meetings since your last meeting. Your last meeting was on December 10th and the council has met since then on December 15th and January 19th. On December 15th, the council held a study session to discuss a draft Affordable Housing Bond Administration and Expenditure Plan. The draft plan establishes a list of affordable housing programs and projects and funding levels for each, considering the city's existing affordable housing funds as well as anticipated funds from the Measure C Affordable Housing Bond, which the voters passed a couple of years ago. In total, the draft plan guided the expenditure of over $64 million across seven separate affordable housing programs. Staff received good feedback from the council and we will be presenting the final plan to them for consideration of approval in March. The council presented a proclamation to Associate Planner Diana Kena on the occasion of her retirement honoring and commending her for 20 over 24 years of continuous and outstanding service to the city, very similar to the resolution that the Planning Commission presented her with on December 10th. The council unanimously approved the second reading of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that had been introduced on December 1st and it went into effect on January 14th. And finally, on December 15th, the staff presented the Economic Development Strategy Annual Implementation Report to the City Council. The report highlights progress on the various actions identified in the Economic Development Strategy, which was adopted by the council in 2017. This year's report was largely focused on pandemic response, including business outreach activities, permit assistance and regulatory solutions such as eviction moratoria and delivery fee limits for businesses impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. On January 19th, at a special meeting held at 10 o'clock in the morning, the council authorized the city manager to issue a commitment letter for a permanent financing loan of $16.7 million to Resources for Community Development for the affordable multi-unit rental development at 3600 San Pablo Avenue. As the commission may recall, on October 20th, I administratively approved this seven-story 90-unit 100% affordable housing project that has ground floor space for Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program under SB 35 and AB 1763. The reason for the 10 a.m. meeting was that the county that RCD needed this commitment for their grant deadline, which was, I think, 5 p.m. that same day prior to the council's evening meeting. And speaking of the council's evening meeting on January 19th, there were no planning-related items on that agenda. As to other matters, first I want to remind you that your conflict of interest forms, that is Form 700, are due to the State Fair Political Practices Commission on April 1st. I believe that the city clerk has sent you an email about this, but if not, you can find the form on the FPPC website. And I just like to encourage you to get those in on time because there is a fine. Concerning the Planning Commission vacancies that we've just talked a little bit about, as you know, we now have two vacancies on the commission due to the resignations of Commissioners Guerrero and Sohane. The city clerk will be posting a vacancy announcement soon and the recruitment period is required to be at least 45 days. Therefore, the earliest that the council could make the appointments would be at their second meeting in March and hopefully they can do that in time to have the new commissioner seated for your May March 25th meeting, although the process may take longer than that. Please spread the word and ask anyone you know who you think might be interested and qualified to apply or seat on the commission. Finally, as relates to city staffing, as you know, Associate Planner Diana Kena retired on December 31st and former Assistant Planner Navar Oaks has been promoted to Diana's former position. We are currently recruiting for a new Assistant Planner to take Navar's place. That recruitment was open for three weeks and it closed on January 15th. We have received many applications, which we are now reviewing and we hope to have the position filled within a couple of months. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Charlie. The next part of the agenda is the disclosure of ex parte communications and identification of conflicts of interest. There been any ex parte communications? Okay, and I don't believe we have any conflicts of interest. I think Charlie, can you verify that?
Yes.
Is there anyone?
As regards residences, there are no conflicts for any of the items on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Fantastic. We're going to move now into the public hearings section of the agenda. We have three public hearings today. The first one is the elevation 22 street tree removal.
That is Navar and I believe they should have their PowerPoint teed up. And Navar, can you go ahead and share your screen? There we go.
Are you seeing the full slide? Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Are you seeing the full presentation or?
We're seeing the PowerPoint edit mode. Just go into, yeah, there you go, right there.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. Good evening, everybody. So yes, tonight I'll be presenting removal permit proposed for elevation 22. So back in 2020, there was a minor design review application to redo the landscaping at elevation 22. That application was approved except for the part of the application that proposed to replace the existing trees that are in poor health adjacent to the site. So that part of the applications before you tonight is a separate tree removal permit as required under the Urban Forestry Ordinance. It's for the removal and replacement of three camphor trees and one marine on the drone tree. So these trees, the three are located on Long Doyle Street, which are shown with red circles on the right side of your screen and one is adjacent to the Emeryville Greenway on towards the left side of your screen there. So as part of this application, the applicant hired an arborist who reviewed all of the trees and found them to be in poor or very poor conditions and thus necessitating the removal. The city consulting arborist reviewed the applicant's arborist report and concurred with them and had no further comments on the. So under the Urban Forestry Ordinance, the Planning Commission approval is required and is subject to the conditions of approval that are in the resolution. So that resolution requires an encroachment permit from Public Works and what that encroachment permit does is work out all the details. So it has a tree replacement plan and that specifies the amount of soil for each tree so the trees can grow healthily, the size of the new trees and considerations for their planting and irrigation. And it also requires the payment of replacement value, which both arborists concurred is $2,900. This application is exempt from CEQA and it is staff's recommendation to approve the proposed tree removal permit. I am available for questions this evening, as is the applicant. Thank you. Would you like me to stop sharing my screen right now or would you like me to?
I think you can keep it up until. Well, actually, yeah, I think the question is, are there any questions for staff? And then you might need this if there are any questions. Are there any questions?
I have a question. I don't know if it's for staff, but if not, they could tell me. But this, when we remove the trees and we plant the new ones, are we doing a better engineered soil than what was originally? Are we upgrading that?
Yeah, my understanding is when elevation 22 was constructed that the Urban Forestry Ordinance and the soil requirements did not exist at that time. So I believe that there is no structural soil for the existing trees, which is probably part of their, I don't know, I'm not an arborist, but I imagine contributing to those trees for health. And so this would definitely be improvement of those conditions.
That's what I was, yeah, I kind of thought that soil was prior to that ordinance and I'm hoping we're going to do a better job. And I think if we do replace them, that they'll have a much better chance of actually maturing. Thank you, Navar.
Sure.
Are there any other questions? For Navar?
I have a question.
Vice Chair Young, yeah?
Yeah, I have a question. When rating the tree as poor and very poor, there's a standard that you're putting on the, are the other trees, are they average? Are they above average? Are they very good?
Sure. Not all of the trees were assessed as part of this application. They only assessed the trees that were suspected to have issues. If the trees were looking fine, I don't think they assessed them, but the applicant could answer that question more thoroughly, I believe.
Thank you.
Sure.
Would you like me to ask the applicant to respond to that?
Is there going to be a presentation or is it just a?
The applicant does, the applicant does not have a presentation, but they are available to answer questions.
Okay, and it may be fine to take the PowerPoint down at this time and.
Okay, this is Kira Goodman, who I will now asking her to unmute so she can, oops, wrong person.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Yeah, so we had a couple arborists assess the trees. We had one go out and look at every single tree at elevation 22 and he flagged or they flagged four. And so these were the ones we had the consulting arborist go out and further assess and do the report on.
So there's no written report on all the other trees?
No, no.
Right, okay.
Okay, are there are there any other questions? Okay, so here, this is, this is officially a public hearing. So now is the time for the public comment or sorry, public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submittal on your online speaker card. By now, three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen and if you're calling in, use star nine and the clerk will call at you at the appropriate time. Charlie or the city clerk, have there been any comments received?
There are no online speaker cards and I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. I don't think we'll get comments on this, so I think we will move on. Hearing no additional requests to make comments, the public comment portion of this item is now closed.
Public hearing is closed.
The public hearing portion, yeah, I know. Public hearing, public comment, okay. Okay. So I think, are we moving on to the next item?
You need to take a vote on this.
Oh, yes, I do need to take a vote officially.
I would make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
I second that.
I would second it. She can. All right. Moved by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Commissioner Mendez. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Young.
Aye.
Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so we're still in the public hearing portion and we're now going to hear about the Emery Go-Round Temporary Fleet Parking Conditional Use Permit Amendment.
Yes, and I am going to do that presentation this evening because I have given Mira the night off. Well, actually, I've allowed her to stay home and work on the Biomed project tonight. She's not just having fun.
As I say, that's not quite off.
No, it's not. I am going to try to share my screen. Let's see. Here we go. Hang on, sorry. All right, can you all see that? Yes, okay, good.
Yes.
All right, this is an application from the Emeryville Transportation Management Association for an extension of the conditional use permit that they currently have to occupy the so-called Rifkin lot on Horton Street with to park buses and employee vehicles. As some of you may recall, on March 15th, 2018, the Planning Commission approved a major use permit for the ETMA to use about three quarters of the so-called Rifkin lot at 4555 Horton Street for temporary parking of Emery Go-Round shuttle buses and employee cars, and that would be until April 15th of 2020, when they were hoping to move to their new bus yard that they are building in Oakland under the MacArthur Maze on Caltrans land on Mandela Parkway. Last year, on February 27th, the commission approved an amendment to this use permit to extend the occupancy from two years to three years with a new expiration date April 15th, 2021. The reason for that was because of delays they had with the Caltrans lease approval and longer than anticipated will process with Oakland from they had a conditional use permit for construction of their new facility. The site construction did start in December, but due to the pandemic, there have been construction delays and that has necessitated this request for a further extension. The facility is expected to be completed, as I said, by June. So their request now is to extend their current conditional use permit from April 15th, 2021 to June 30th, 2021, which is an extension of two and a half months. This is the location. Here is Horton Street and 53rd Street. This is kind of an old aerial photograph, but the Sherwin-Williams project is currently under construction to the west and south of this site. Of course, Bay Street is across the railroad and this is the site of the Biomed project that the commission will be considering in the coming months. Their parking garage will be right here where the Emery Go-Round is currently parking their buses on the parking lot and then the new Biomed buildings will be up in this area here. And the new bus yard, of course, is way off this map to the south on Mandela Parkway in West Oakland. These are the findings for a conditional use permit. I'm not going to read them all to you. You're familiar with them. There's five of them. Staff believes that the findings for this use permit to extend it for two and a half months can be made. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve this amendment to this use permit to extend the occupancy for the Emery Go-Round fleet parking at 4555 Horton Street. So the approval will now expire on June 30th, 2021. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions and Ronnie Hatrup from the ETMA is also available to answer.
Hey, thank you, Charlie. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Would you like me to stop my screen share now?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Are there any questions for the other representative?
You mean from Ronnie Hatrup?
Yeah. Okay.
We can.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can. Hi, Ronnie.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your consideration of our extension request. We are excited to report that we have began construction on our parking facility and we are also pleased to hear.
Uh oh. I know Ronnie has.
From our contract. Sure.
I'm going to drop that out.
Construction is anticipated to be completed. If you have any questions regarding this request on here, answer them.
Okay, are there any additional questions?
Delayed feedback.
Can she repeat that? Can she repeat that? I believe she said that the construction is expected to be completed in May. Oh, thank you.
Okay, seeing that there are no other questions, this also is a public hearing. So now's the time for public for public comment. Now, now's the time for a public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submittal of the online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed by the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, please use star nine and the clerk will call on you at the appropriate time. So Charlie, maybe you can answer whether there are any comment cards online or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
I see no online comment cards and no raised hands.
Okay, hearing no additional requests to make comments, the public comment, sorry, the public hearing portion of this item is now closed.
Okay.
Shall we officially do take a vote?
We need a motion and a second first.
I motion.
I would make a motion and go ahead and move forward on her extension. Maybe because my screen is fuzzy. I would make a motion to move this forward. What did I do to my screen here? What is that? You know, it's really weird looking. A lot of people have been having connection problems these last few days and I think it may be because of the storms. That's what I remember. Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair Young and a second from Commissioner Mendez. On the motion, Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Young. Aye. And Commissioner and Chair Thompson.
Aye. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Five ayes, this application is. Decision may be appealed within 15 days.
Fantastic. Okay, we have another public hearing on the agenda, the garage conversion into two bedrooms.
And this is Navar.
Hello again, Chair. Hello again, Commissioners. All right, tonight I'll also be presenting to you on the proposed garage conversion to two bedrooms at 101747th Street. The applicant is present tonight and available for questions, but does not have a presentation for you. So the proposal is to convert our first floor to two additional bedrooms. The site location here at 101747th Street is on the south side of 47th, close to Adeline Street, just west of Adeline Street. So in addition to converting the garage into additional bedrooms, this necessitates the removal of the garage door, of course, and to match the exterior finishes with the other finishes around it and to replace the driveway with new landscaping. So the original building was duplex, the ground floor unit was a studio and the total square footage on site was just under 2,000 square feet. In 2020, there was a minor design review application to refurbish the entire building, which included the expansion of the studio into a one-bedroom unit for additional 577 square feet. That increase in FAR did not trigger a use permit because it was under the base FAR of .5. The current proposal goes over the base. The current proposal goes over the base, let me try that again, goes over the base FAR of .5 to .56, convert the one-bedroom that was approved with a minor permit into a three-bedroom unit. So this is an additional 385 square feet. And this is just that same information written out instead of in chart format, which I thought might be easier to read. So here we have, on the left side of the screen, what was approved under the minor designer view permit. So it's a one-bedroom unit with a garage that's quite deep on the upper right of that floor plan. And then on the right side of the screen, that's converted into two bedrooms. So in this slide here, it's just showing that space. So on the left side, it's the garage, and then on the right side, what's proposed to replace that garage is two bedrooms. So at the top of the screen here is the original home. Right now, that home is under construction, so it does not look like this right now. It's taken down to the bare bones, I believe. In the middle slide is what's approved under the minor designer view permit, and then what's at the bottom is what's proposed. So it's the removal of that garage door to match the. But to highlight that, you can see what's approved there and what's proposed, and highlighted in a red square there is the removal of that garage door and replacement with a window and some stucco and some hardboard siding. For the landscaping on the left side of the screen there, you have the existing with the driveway, and then what's proposed with the refurbished landscaping. And all the landscaping is subject to water-efficient landscaping ordinance, so those are all water-efficient plans that are proposed. So for the general plan, this is in a medium-density residential area. It's an area of stability where there aren't anticipated to be significant changes in uses, but you can still have demolitions, new construction, and building modifications. For zoning, it's in the RM zone, and existing use is two units, and there's no change in use proposed. And as we discussed, this is only for the increase in FAR. Bonus points are not required for an increase in FAR in the RM district, but the required findings are that it's compatible with the neighborhood, and the design minimizes the appearance of driveways, parking spaces, and garage doors, which this certainly does. So for parking, as you're probably familiar, Emeryville recently removed parking minimums, so no parking is required, and no parking is proposed for vehicles. There are two proposed bicycle spaces at the rear of the property, even though none is required for a single unit or two units. So this is compliant with setback in open space. There's no proposed changes for those, and 10% of the lot area must be landscaped, which this far exceeds. For conditional use permit, this has to be consistent with the general plan. It has to be compatible with the neighborhood and compatible with utilities and emergency response systems. The proposed use has to contribute to the general well-being of the community, and the proposed use must comply with the planning regulations. For going over the best, the base FAR, the .5 FAR, the proposed project again has to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and it must be designed to minimize the appearance of off-street parking, which there is no proposed off-street vehicular parking. And for major designer view findings, the design of the project must be consistent with the general plan and with the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and it must be of a high design quality that's compatible with the area and will not adversely affect it. It is staff's recommendation to approve the proposed conversion of the garage into two bedrooms, and that is the conclusion of my presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you, Navar.
Sure, thank you.
So at this time, are there any questions from the staff? For the staff, I should say, from the Commissioners? Okay, and then the applicant does not have a presentation? Is that what was stated in the beginning?
An application does, sorry, let me try that. Applicant does not have a presentation this evening, but is available for questions as they are in attendance.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant from the Commissioners? Okay. All right, again, this is also a public hearing, so I'm going to, now is the time for the public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submittal on your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature. Visible on your screen, if you're calling in, press star nine, and the clerk will call at you at the appropriate time. So Charlie, are there any comments? Have any comments been received by online comment card, or has anyone raised their hand to make audio comments?
No, there are no online speaker cards, and there are no raised hand.
Okay, hearing no additional requests to make a comment, the public hearing portion of this item is now closed. All right, so I don't think we'll need the presentation anymore, so if you want to take that down, you can. Okay, so this is the normal time for deliberation by the Planning Commission, or we could move forward with a vote. Are there any comments or thoughts on this item?
I just have one small comment about the bike parking. So I really appreciate that this will provide a larger living space with more bedrooms, and I would put it in the category of family-friendly. The bike parking that's proposed right now is probably not useful for larger bikes like cargo bikes, but that's a very small comment and not something that would cause me to vote no on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Chafe. Is there, are there any other Commissioner comments? Vice Chair Young?
No, I think it's, I'm really glad that they worked on some of the aspects on the vegetation in front of the building. I think it's kind of cool. I think the building looks great. I think the coverage looks compatible with the neighborhood, so I don't have any real comments with that.
Okay, I'll just also go through the Commissioners again. Commissioner Mendez, do you have any comments?
No, other than I think this is a complete upgrade than what was there, so I'm very pleased to see that this work is being done.
Commissioner Keller?
No, I just, I like the improvement in the neighborhood. It's always good to fix up an older home, and adding places for people instead of cars is always a win for me.
Okay, I think, yeah, that's everyone present. Yeah, I too am pleased to see this conversion. I think it's important to bring additional housing units and the variety of housing to Emeryville. I appreciate the addition of the bike parking. There is a loss of storage, but it's nice to see that it's provided nonetheless. So Charlie, do you want to go ahead with a vote?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion for approval.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion was by Commissioner Keller, and I believe the second was by Commissioner Chafe. Am I correct? All right, on the motion, Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Young?
Aye.
And Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So moving on to the final item, our second to the last thing is the Planning Commissioner comments. Are there any comments at this time?
No comments. Other than I'm going to miss our two Commissioners who have resigned, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, I would second that, that we look forward to, you know, giving them an official notice of their service and how much we enjoyed having them on the Commission. Okay, well, this was a record meeting, so I think I'm going to officially adjourn, and the time is 7:10.